Good evening, everyone. This is the Southern Board of Education special meeting. Today is July uh twenty-third at five thirty-one. And I call the meeting into order. Can we rise for the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We are um we have exits right over here in the backside. Just walk out the doors, take a left and keep on walking. Um we are waiting for Kira this evening. Um she will be here in couple of minutes. So um I'm just gonna ask that we kinda recess a little bit. I just I have to start meetings on time just because if there's people watching and then they're wondering where we are. So can I have a motion just to recess for until Kira gets here?
So much.
Second.
All in favor?
I
I okay, no talking about board business. We are live so you can do whatever. No idea. We'll give her like five minutes or so. Yep, let's verify that the feed is working as well. Nine minutes for her?
Even though we're just meeting in one, do we need to keep do room two's door open?
In does only one door?
This one's open. I just wanna make sure.
It's in a slide. Alright, I just can't worry that Kira's ten minutes out. Alright, so um let's take him with that in mind. I don't wanna wait ten minutes. So it's
Can we move number can we move number three to number two?
No. Um well, we'll just go one, two and three.
Okay.
But motion to go back into session then.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, second. All in favor? All right, I'm okay.
Hi.
No offense to Kira, but I don't wanna we have a long evening ahead of us. Alright, so the first thing on the agenda um is the referendum results. Um I wanna take a thank you to everybody that participated in voting um and the registers and the town clerk. Um we had one thousand five hundred and forty-nine people that voted. Um the um Everbridge that was used the evening before obviously reminded a lot of people. Um they were short thirteen ballots, which is really incredible. Good job and kudos to them on that. Normally when they order the ballots, it's it's based on the number of people that they've had in the last you know, few referendums. So um that's why they ran a little bit short. Um the referendum vote came out at eight hundred and seventy-seven in favor of passing the budget and um six hundred and seventy-two that were not in favor of it. Um the Board of Finance did do a um exit poll. Um even though the budget passed, I do feel that it's very important for us to get those results. Um just so that we know, you know, what people are kind of saying and what people are thinking. Um Board of Finance did meet last night. Obviously, they have not had time to tally those up. Um so I will work with the Board of Finance to get those results for us. Make myself known. Does anybody have any questions or comments on the referendum?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask again, how many ballots were we short by?
Thirteen.
Thank you.
Anything else?
So it was so short in handing them out.
So they had to go back and make copies of those and then they had to hand count those thirteen.
Cause that's roughly what I think percent increase we had roughly cause last time it was barely a thousand.
Nine was nine hundred and seventy-three.
We we had almost as many votes in favor
Right.
of the budget as we did total votes in the prior referendum.
Right.
Right.
That's pretty cool.
We could do the math, yeah.
Yeah, so it is fifty-four percent that were in favor of the town budget. So what really I was very, very pleased with that. Okay, um I was hoping Kira is gonna be here for this. Um everybody in your packet. Um do you guys have the warrant for um April and for May? We're not gonna spend too much time on this. Um what um I'm going to ask that is after that you look over these packets and everything, then you work with Kira, make any questions that you have and then that will be taken up at a business and planning um subcommittee meeting. Um just as in normal. June's is not complete yet. Um that uh Paul is working on that. Um and Paul Hendrickson is our um interim business manager at this time. Um Paul comes to us with a enormous uh resume and we're very fortunate to have him. Um Naval Academy um in accounting, correct? Or
Mathematics.
Mathematics and
Yeah. He has an MBA from Harvard and a lot of experience with Ridgefield and just retired from Trumbull. So he is also retired captain from the Navy and attended the Naval Academy.
Yeah.
So yeah, his trajectory, you know, from one layer to another.
Yes.
But he's been working very well as a team.
Yeah. Yeah, so um he's doing fantastic and as well. Um we've tapped into our resources at Learn for some accounting. Um so combined um and we're not spending any additional money. We're staying within the money in our shared service budget for that item. Um and um it seems to be going very, very well. Um what's her ETA now? Do you have her on locating or I don't wanna really start this without her, but I don't wanna hold up.
Say three minutes.
Three minutes?
Three minutes. I got the fifteen minute text. There's three minutes left.
Um I'd like to throw something out there which will kill at least thirty or forty seconds.
Okay. It's always good time. Yep.
Um
It has to stay on the agenda.
Yeah. I know.
Oh, okay, okay.
Um we have um obviously a lot of work to do tonight. And um there will be feedback um that we share with each other about our own performance as well as about the superintendents.
So that's not like okay, so be careful where you're going here.
I I know. I would just like to point out that with that large a turnaround in the vote, I think that that is in and of itself some pretty good feedback for the superintendent. Congratulations. We didn't get that, you did.
Excellent. It's a team effort. I mean the families were outstanding out there
Yeah, but
reminding parents um so and reminding the community. So the parents really came out to support.
Yeah.
And so we are appreciative of everyone. And there was like a buzz yesterday and there was a positive aura. I felt like a week ago there was like a dark cloud and then it started to turn. So um we appreciate everyone.
I know you take your role seriously enough. So i- if things had gone badly, you would have felt that a reflection on you. So take credit.
Yep. So um underneath referendum um results as well, um I just wanna say that um positions have been posted. Um that includes the middle school, uh music, um the school counselors for middle school and high school, fifth grade classroom, two ten-month um secretarial positions. The pre-K has been posted, the reading interventionists have been posted. Um additionally, there was a post made for a long-term sub for fourth um grade and for special edu- um education teacher. Um and those additional ones, don't worry, Kara, we're you're fine. Um those additional ones um that I just named, the long-term sub and special education are not because of retirements or anything of that nature. Um it's just different shifts. So Kara, just bring you up to date. We just went over referendum results and um we just went over the positions that were posted. That's it. Okay?
Thanks.
Okay. Um in addition, um you have two packets in front of you for the warrants. One is for April and one is for May. I've directed everybody to take a look at them, bring your questions to you and then you will address those at a business and planning meeting. Does that sound good?
Perfect. Will you help? Thank you.
Okay. And June um June's is still in the works. Um and with that, I just wanna give you a report from the business um office. And um I'm just gonna read it in its entirety. That's okay with everybody. Um the goal is in uh collaboration with the town, produce um timely, accurate and transparent financial statements which will enable officials to make well-reasoned decisions. Um system access. The interim business manager, Paul Hendrickson, has been working with the town finance director, uh Valerie Bells, four times for a total of five to six hours. Um the meetings have been productive and Ms. Bells um has assisted Mr. Hendrickson in gaining access to the following the town accounts. All the food service accounts, formerly it was only the expes- uh expense accounts and the auditors. Um and our town auditors are Clifton Larson Allen. Um and um you know, we're getting ready for the audit. This access will increase the communication between the town and the Board of Education, which will increase um uniformity and transparency in reporting. So we're very excited about that. To date, the Board of Education has um submitted six of twenty-one of the requested items for the audit. Um and the audit completion date is January thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. Um Mr. Hendrickson has established contact with Mr. Harold Smith, who is the lead um um audit auditor as well for the company. Um for accounting, the town finance director rolled over the um twenty-four, twenty-five budget as a proxy for the twenty twenty-five, twenty-six budget pending the results of the referendum um on Tuesday, which was last night. Now that the budget has passed, Mrs. Uh Ms. Bells will um take the twenty-five, twenty-six budget that she has in standby and um substitute it. So now we are going to go into our twenty-five, twenty-six budget. Um this has enabled the Board of Education to submit the twenty-five, twenty-six requisitions and prepare for the upcoming school year. So that's great news. Um also, Mr. Um Hendrickson has created a graph of uh cumulative percentage of the budget spent to date um by month for the twenty-four, twenty-five year and the preceding three years. Um this is gonna assist the board, the superintendent and the business manager to um detect anomalies and to address them. Um you're gonna get copies of all of that at your next meeting. Um please note that from January to May of twenty twenty-five, the budget um spend has been running lower than in the prior three years. So that's exciting. So this is gonna be Paul couldn't make it here tonight. So this is his report to give. Kira, you're gonna have to schedule a meeting so you can I'm gonna give you this and then you're gonna go over all of this with however you wanna do it. Does that sound good?
Sounds good.
Okay. Um what did I leave off? Um Ms. Bells and Mr. Hendrickson had determined from the auditing town town financial statements, um RSI dash two, that there were Board of Education balance for twenty-two, twenty-three was fifty-one thousand one hundred and sixty-four dollars. And that's gonna be put into your capital reserves subject to the Board of Finance approval.
What was it in fifty-one thousand?
Fifty-one thousand one hundred and sixty-four. I'm giving you this afterwards.
Okay. Oh.
Okay, and in twenty twenty-three to twenty-four, a hundred and sixty-three thousand four hun- um a hundred and sixty-three thousand forty-five dollars to be put into that non-lapsing account per the auditors. Okay, cause remember you have two different years. One year you have to go by the old way and now you're going to the new way. Okay? Uh Ms. Bells and Mr. Hendrickson will be developing a year-end closing workshop um which will list the items to be completed, the timeline for being completed and the party responsible for each item. So that's pretty exciting um for the audit. It's definitely gonna help. Um they're working on reconciliation of bank accounts and munis. Um Ms. Um Rachel Brown from Learn um has been working diligently over the past um several weeks to reconcile a discrepancy of approximately twenty-five thousand dollars between the Board of Education and bank accounts and munis. Um this has involved painstaking work going back to the beginning of the twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year to um reconcile these accounts. Um she has made multiple working sessions with Mr. Hendrickson and Ms. Bells to work on a reconciliation. So you'll wanna follow up on that. Um food service, um there is a significant um overage on that. The twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year deficit for the food service account was um in the red by two hundred and eighteen thousand three hundred and fifty-five dollars and ninety-five cents.
Jesus.
The deficit must be funded from the twenty-four, twenty-five Board of Education budget general fund and or any prior year reserves. So we are going to be paying out two hundred and eighteen thousand three hundred and fifty-five dollars and ninety-five cents to food service. Um grants, um and that's why we have a business manager to work out where things are and how that'll work out. Um as far as grants, um grant funds um had not been uh requested requested prior to June. Um so they are working on that. The mental health grant confirmed um ended for the fiscal year twenty twenty-five and that's new knowledge to us. So we are now absorbing the social workers um position, which originally we had thought was going to be um covered by a grant. Um pre the pre-K grant has
Back you up in a second?
Mm-hmm.
Just not sure I followed that last quite clear correctly. Did we miss the grant and that's why we didn't get the money?
No, the grant ended and we were not told that it ended.
Oh, well, that's helpful.
Um the pre-K grant also concluded in the fiscal year twenty twenty-five that um smart start for recovery. So just as an FYI, we are covering that now as well. So those are two grants that, you know, we talked about in years past and we're excited about. Well, now they're gone. And now we don't have income to up that expense. So um there's gonna have to be some, you know, considerations as far as um some of that goes um where that money is gonna come from. Um
There's a question. Do you know if that was like a state or federal grant?
Yeah. He
It was a three-year. We knew it was in day
Yeah, we knew.
No, I just I wasn't I was curious if it was through the state.
Oh, it was it was a it was a state.
It was the state grant. Yep, yep.
Um the educator uh data system, um teacher schedules and assignments must match, but there are discrepancies that are being addressed to ensure that the state reporting is accurate. Um so that is a work in progress. Um and um upcoming webinars um that are going to be taking place um is paid sick leave, which is on Wednesday. That's actually today eleven o'clock. It's already been done. Uh TRB health subsidy training, which was Wednesday and Thursday, July twenty-ninth and thirtieth. And a comprehensive overview of a twenty-five, twenty twenty-five legislation impacting district school and state financial project is going to be taking place on Thursday, August twenty-first at nine o'clock. Um that is the end of his um report. I am handing that off to Kira. Um and Kira will be working on setting up a meeting with um business and planning to do deep dives into everything. Um I was my concern was that you can't really go from June until August without, you know, without some kind of update especially if you have different staff members. So that's the purpose of bringing it up. And I I don't wanna step on Kira's toes as the chair whatsoever. It's just been extremely hectic.
Just a couple of questions.
Sure.
You had mentioned um that there's going to be a year-end closing workshop for uh for auditing purposes. Is this gonna be standard practice going forward?
I'm sure that they they Val always does a lot of those workshops and those workshops happen continuously. So I think from my understanding from Val and from Paul, they're going to be working on cohesive closing out and what everything has to be done for closing out for the auditors.
Yeah, it's it's not like a workshop workshop like you're thinking. It's close-out procedures
So Yeah. Right.
that we were called out on in the past that were not established. So the auditors repeatedly would say that that was an area needing improvement. So that was what he was referencing in his report.
That's mainly what I'm getting at. So it's gonna be a standard practice.
Yes, exactly. That's exactly what I wanted to know.
Yes.
So so he's basically correcting what sound like longstanding past problems?
You know, it could be longstanding past problems. You know, you have to understand that there's been so much fluctuation. Um and we had a business manager in a position for three years prior to that. It was one person that did both and maybe when that branched off, something happened and then there was issues um with um there's been two personnel people in um the town side since then. So I think that there's a lot of things that have to get worked out so that it's more efficient. That's what I'm hearing. Okay.
And my second question is on the food service deficit. That was a bit of a shocker.
Yeah.
What what is our are there any processes in place to kind of monitor that quarterly or monthly?
Well, we were told
Just so that we don't get to the end of the year and there's oh my god, two hundred thousand dollars we have to pay back.
The last report that I remember the board receiving is that we were expected that we were gonna be over about a hundred and fifty-six was reported. And when they did all the work, now we're getting the actual number. Um so um
It's a pretty big discrepancy.
Yeah, I can contribute a little bit if I'm I
Yep. Oh, please.
So um food service as a standalone, when we look at all of the expenses and we look at the revenue, purchases, funds that come from the government and a significant decrease in purchases because the funds that supported free breakfast and lunch um were significant. And we don't have that kind of um result any longer in as far as number of purchases for breakfast and lunch. So um we have to cover the loss.
So that was something that we spoke about at the business and planning meeting that we wanted to discuss because it was during COVID. We were getting free lunches for everybody, free breads for everyone and then that changed. So the question is why are people not purchasing lunches? And then the previous business manager had said that, you know, she reaches out to families when it when they're at a certain threshold of not paying, which is basically all she can do. Kids have to be served the lunches, which they should be fed. They need to be fed. And so then we have this deficit. It's obviously huge and deserves more discussion. So
Yeah, I think
So that that's a small portion. It's about sixteen thousand
That's pretty true.
of uncovered debt from families.
Yeah, sixteen thousand. So what's the rest of it?
That's
Uh two hundred and fifty.
It's salaries, salaries. It's all the expenses to run food service.
So the government was funding that previously or what do you
They were funding purchases, but because everything was free, every purchase would be funded by the government. So we had an abundance of participants. That was taken away. So we don't have kids purchasing lunch. Therefore, we don't have that revenue coming in. And so that's our end result.
Breakfast. And your enrollment's down too. Yeah.
Same. What part? What I'm sorry, uh the dollar amount that was for unpaid
About sixteen thousand.
Okay, out of that, okay.
Yeah.
So does that mean we need to purchase less because it's not being used?
I I think that um that kinda goes into a very deep conversation. Um I think that the entire program has to be looked at from the superintendents.
I just wanna make sure we clarify. So sixteen thousand is unfund is uh purchases that have been made that it's debt.
Right. Yeah.
Right.
And then the other portion of that is things that we use, money that we've spent that's unfunded that. So that's yeah.
The two hundred thousand. Yeah, either on materials, on equipment, on staffing
Yeah.
and things of that nature.
Cause districts try, you know, you try to have it be self-sustaining
Right.
that the funds coming in offset all of the expenses.
That's the goal. And usually it it had it what used to be self, you know, uh um funded if you will. And then when COVID hit and then that went sideways and some other things have gone sideways since that too. And it's a bubbling rippling effect.
So can you clarify something that I don't understand? Does this include those families that have applied for free lunch?
Yes, we get those funds and offset the expenses and we're still. Oh, absolutely. Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. The sixteen thousand is people that are not on free and reduced lunch and have not paid.
Right.
So if you get like an email and you know, you might get one from uh Payment Plus and it says, you know, your balance is five dollars or your balance is now negative twenty dollars.
Right.
Sometimes you might get a a you know, a letter uh you know, or something like that. Sometimes you don't. And so if parents just hit delete or you know, they don't see them, then they don't pay. Um so that's what happens.
I'm curious. I'm curious to find out if maybe some of these families do actually qualify and they don't know that they qualify.
Something that we talked about after business and planning meeting, cause I think sometimes people don't lie because they're embarrassed cause we're such a small district.
I was just gonna say.
We're supposed to just be the business manager. It's not like some people think about, I don't know how many years ago, twenty, thirty years ago, you'd have a different card. Everyone has the same card going through the same PIN number, you know, or you know, individual PIN number, whatever it is. Um so it's not like one kid has a red ticket and one kid has a yellow ticket. So I think there is like the stigma is released, but I think people still are afraid. So part probably part of that sixteen thousand is probably people that could qualify, but just don't.
And the government does recognize based potentially on
Yeah.
income returns and identifies for the district who's on that list. And they do remain. So the government kind of did away with there was a time that everyone had to apply. Every every year you had to reapply, reapply. There is a database that now streamlines it and holds on to that information. So
So it'll be something that will have to be worked out with the administrators at the, you know, building level to get people to make sure that they sign up, you know. The administrators in our building are are very, very good as well as the teachers for um identifying students in need.
Yeah.
Um you know, I know teachers Um you know, I know teachers in the past had baskets of food out for um insecure, you know um people they couldn't, you know, didn't have a lot, um and they would take them home and stuff and so yeah, you know, out of that sixteen, you know, thousand, um some of that is equated, some of it is equated to also, you know, kids purchasing stuff, you know, and then parents not knowing about it parents not watching the accounts correctly, um and then there's of course the two hundred thousand that's gonna have to be on your shoulders to look at.
And Donna who used to work in the office.
I was gonna say, I assume that there's.
Donna who used to work in the office, worked with the um administrative assistants at each school
Yep.
because they have relationships with families, 'cause sometimes it's just like, hey, did you realize? So that cause could be made, um because once a family realizes it, many times they will make the payment.
Okay. But most times what happens and um it, many times what happens is the account goes below and you just get an email and so if you're not looking at the email, it's just delete. Um nothing gets said to the child because you can't really, nothing gets said to the parent and then before you know it you might have a negative balance of fifty-five, sixty dollars and then you're, you know, so then you're plugging in that sixty-five dollars or whatever it is, you're at zero and then you're like, oh, here we go again, because you have to add additional, so there's there's some challenges with it.
This is problematic, but let's be honest, if the shortfall was sixteen thousand dollars, we wouldn't be having this conversation.
No, that's not, yeah.
Correct, correct.
Yeah.
That's not the problem.
Right, that part is not.
Well, that's what I'm saying, we're investing a lot of money in talking about.
While for sure, the whole program is to be studied because it should be self-sustaining, should not have this deficit.
Well, that's that's gonna be on the superintendent to to kinda look at, ourself, so, okay, go ahead.
Right. I'm sorry, Jackie.
Um I'm just looking for some further clarification, um so education in school in itself is not self-sustainable, right? Like we put money in, we pay for it. Why is food services considered different, like it needs to be self-sustainable or bring in ex- even extra money or profit for the school when it's part of the school system?
You want to answer that, you want me to answer it?
I mean, like, we're feeding students.
I mean, I look into.
It's the cost.
Yes, and we're gonna to, we're gonna fund it.
So why, why wouldn't that, why wouldn't, I just, I guess I assumed that, and I know what they say about assuming, but like my assumption was that because it's part of the umbrella of our district in education, that that would be part of our budget and I don't see it as being like an overage or shortfall that like now we're we're short this money when that's part of funding schools.
It it's always been that way.
I think you.
Well, you do have that, but you also, you also have an amount that you that you pay for lunch and we agree upon that amount every year.
Okay.
So you know, you've kinda budgeted out that way and you know, lunch or your snacks or you know, your breakfast too.
Yeah, but what about the balance of what we're supporting, it's not like we're saying because we're charging so low
Yeah, but it's definitely never gonna be a self-sustaining, it's not gonna be a food thing, it's just like two hundred thousand dollars of services.
or breakfast or a lunch.
That's the question, why are we, why aren't we budgeting for that?
You can't go.
How much is that, four bucks? We're charging less than that for a lunch, right?
Well, it it's quite.
We gotta do one person talking at a time.
Stop, 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 please, stop.
Why aren't we budgeting?
One person at a time, so Jackie.
It's fine, it's, I'm I'm going off, we have a lot more stuff to do, I can put a pin in this and bring it up for a few, for their conversation.
First, I think that goes, I think, I think this goes back to business and planning has a conversation on it and then we kinda go from there, I think we're not gonna solve that tonight, we're gonna get offline and train.
I just wanna make sure that we're not sounding like we're, there's a problem to be fixed because we're feeding kids.
I don't think that that's the case, I don't think that's the case at all.
Yes, how my body felt hearing the conversation, so I just wanted to like say, like ask, you know.
Yeah. No, it two hundred and eighteen thousand is a huge amount to be over, so that's a huge amount to be over.
Especially for a district that size.
That's not just feeding kids, there is more.
Right, right, it's more of a service.
Just for, just for a clarification, that two hundred and eighteen thousand, um putting the sixteen thousand aside, 'cause that's, we we're clear on that, I think. Um that's not something that keeps going and keeps going, does it? Because we have money in our budget to support food service, so that was sort of like a, like a hitch in the road? Is that kind of essentially what it is?
Every year, we, every year, we have to reconcile it.
And is it something that comes up every year?
It was a separate account, it's a separate account, separate from our operational budget
Yeah.
that we then need to take from the operational to cover it, it is a completely.
Is it always a two hundred thousand dollar deficit?
No, absolutely not.
Yes.
Is it, is it usually thirty, forty, two hundred is crazy, like, you know, so.
Okay.
Well, um.
This is the first time in five years since COVID, so what was happening before, I'd have to go back to see.
That's what I'd be curious with, 'cause what it seems like is with COVID, we were then given money because of that and so it became a problem at that point, maybe, but that's what I'm curious about.
I think, I think that it needs a deep dive and I think we're getting too much into it, that that's really up to the superintendent to kinda look into
Yeah.
Yeah. Sure. Mm-hmm.
um into that more, um you know, and come up with solutions and discuss it at business and planning, that's what I think. Alright, um so that concludes um the reports from the business office, is there any other things that people wanna ask on that? Can we once?
Before we go off, could you just quickly go through the posted positions again? I wanted to make sure that I, I was like writing them down, but shorthand, like.
Sure. Everything is posted, everything is posted, so the middle school music, um the um guidance counselors for the middle school and the high school are posted then um fifth grade teachers posted, the two um ten-month secretary positions, pre-K and reading interventionist and in addition, there was the long-term sub and fourth um long-term sub for fourth grade and uh special education teacher.
But what school is that from, special education, elementary?
Okay. Elementary.
That was the last one, special education teacher at elementary.
Yep, and they're offline, right?
So everything went up today or recently?
When did you? Early this, yeah, this week.
The, yeah. Alright, so um with that being said we're gonna move on to item four, um can I have a motion to go to invite the superintendent in for executive session for the annual superintendent evaluation? Any discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Alright, okay, we're now in executive session and we're gonna head off to the other room, so we're.